I'm Anita. I have a big cold, I don't want it to touch you.
I don't want you to get anything.
You can move closer.
But I don't have any infections, just a dry cough.
Okay, I believe you.
We are live.
Okay. Can I call this zoning meeting of the zoning commission on January 28th, 2025 to order? Can we please have roll?
Mr. McNulty here.
Ms. Foster.
Here.
Mr. Bellis.
Here.
Mr. Avadunula. Mr. Pierce.
Here.
All right, so Robin, what business do we have before us today?
So, on this evening's agenda, we have a zoning training with our legal counsel, Julie Donen is here to go, she has some materials that she's going to present, and then there's an opportunity for you as commission members to ask any questions that you like as well. Time permitting, I would like to talk a little bit about our zoning code rewrite at the end of the meeting. You know, I don't think we're going to get too deep into it, but I think if we could try to finish up Article 5 that we started our discussion on back in November, would like to keep that ball rolling, and then we'll look to schedule an additional meeting on that in February.
Okay, thank you. Can the record show that?
Mr. Avadunula is here.
Is here, as well as two alternate members of the zoning commission.
So, again, I'm Julie Donen, good to see you all again. You've got some materials in front of you tonight. It's our offices zoning manual training for zoning commission members. Before we get started, I like to tell folks, I like to go for about an hour, so hopefully that's not too long, and I won't start to see heads nodding off or eyes glazed. I know I usually start glazing when I'm giving this presentation and if it goes more than an hour. If you have questions as we go on, just ask them. Again, the purpose is for this to be as helpful and productive for you folks as possible. But in terms of kind of overview and what we're going to talk about, we're going to talk about just zoning in general in the revised code and what zoning means for townships. We're going to talk about the nature and function of a zoning commission, which spoiler alert, you are all members of. Going to talk, touch a bit on comprehensive plans, I'm not going to get too far into that since you folks are fortunate that you have a comprehensive plan. Sometimes we walk into places and that's not always the case. We'll talk about zoning amendments, won't go too far into the actual weeds of the procedural process, but because I'd like to spend time on conducting zoning hearings, decision making, things to think about when making decisions, want to talk about a bit of ethics, you know, conflicts of interest and that type of thing, and that sort of thing. So, but if you have questions, please at any point just stop me and we'll get things moving. I do, I will spend a little bit of time kind of on the overview because I think that's important substance wise. You need to know, you know, you folks are charged with amending your zoning resolution, and there are some things in the revised code that say you can't do this, you can do some of these things, or you can do not whatever you want, but within, you know, reasonable guidelines and that sort of thing. So, kind of, and I, don't worry, I'm not reading through everything, so we're going to just touch on some things and that sort of thing. So, townships in the revised code are, townships are creatures of statute, which mean that if you cannot, you are, townships are only afforded the authority that's in the revised code, or that you can necessarily imply from something being in the revised code. That is different from a city or a village where basically they can do whatever they want as long as it's not illegal. Townships are the opposite, you can only do what's actually in the revised code. So, that's kind of, again, from the broad perspective township authority, township zoning authority. That is spelled out in Chapter 519 of the revised code. That chapter walks through, again, the limits of township's abilities for zoning, walks through the requirements for a zoning commission, requirements for a board of zoning appeals, and that sort of thing. Not going, if you guys have questions about what your Board of Zoning Appeals does, happy to answer that. How many of you folks have served on the BZA before? Okay, okay. I mentioned, I mentioned this to Ms. Foster on the way in, it is easier for, in my opinion, it's easier for BZA members to join the zoning commission than the other way. There's more opportunity for running afoul when you go from zoning commission to BZA. So, just as an aside. Anyways, in terms of, you know, what, at the end of the day, what is zoning? Zoning is the process of identifying and putting restrictions on land uses and features of those lands, and creating areas of land into districts that make sense in terms of uses. You guys are familiar with residential uses and commercial uses and industrial uses, and you know, the overall goal is to put those things together in a way that makes sense and is cohesive. At the end of the day, zoning is a police power, which means that you are taking property rights from someone else, you're putting a restriction on someone's ability to do what they want with their property, which a police power is pretty important, and so to that end, when the township's exercising its police powers through zoning, can't be unreasonable, can't be arbitrary, because if it is those things, at the end of the day, it's unconstitutional. You're taking my property rights away from me, you're telling me I can or can't do something, can't be unreasonable or arbitrary, because, again, you need, you need a good reason for it. So, townships, again, and townships at the end of the day have the ability to, in terms of zoning restrictions, the focus is, the ability to zone and restrict is based on public convenience, comfort, prosperity, or general welfare, which that's a list of, I don't know, very academically minded terms and that sort of thing, but those should always be the focus. You know, that's kind of the focus as opposed to unreasonable or arbitrary, it's, you know, the general welfare, prosperity and comfort, that type of thing. Zoning is a legislative function, you know, creating, you know, zoning, the zoning commission, what you do is a legislative function, you are acting like Congress, you are acting like the General Assembly of Ohio, you are reviewing and enacting law, basically. Again, you're going through the zoning code rewrite, that is, that's, you are writing the law of the township at that point, you're providing recommendations on, on what will be the law of the township. So, that's something to keep in mind when you are acting in your role, that's, that's kind of the, again, the underlying function. Legislative function is different than a judicial function, which is what your BZA does. That means that your, your standards on which you make your decisions are different between those bodies, because in that capacity, they're acting like a judge, BZA is acting like a judge, and again, you folks are acting more like Congress or our State General Assembly. In terms of, again, globally, can't be unreasonable, can't be arbitrary, it is, it's unconstitutional. Constitutionality of zoning restrictions can be contested in a couple of different ways. Again, as I mentioned, you know, arbitrary, unreasonable, but then also, if the zoning provision denies a person all economical viability of their property, that's unconstitutional, taking. So, at the end of the day, that's also something to keep in mind. Sometimes, you know, sometimes zoning commissions or trustees, when they have a rezoning application, it can be so far into a box, and, and again, sometimes you can say no, you can say no to folks sometimes, but there are situations where it's, look, if you don't approve this or if you don't do this, then they literally cannot do anything, not, well, they can't do what they want with it, but truly a situation of, I can't do anything with this property unless you allow me to. And again, if you say no, then at that point, it can be unconstitutional because it's a taking of property, basically. So, 51912 does have some specific things that either limit or prohibit the township's ability to, when it comes to zoning. They're very specific and they kind of jump around, it's kind of an interesting list of, in my mind, probably some pretty powerful lobbyists, quite frankly. But, but again, there are specific items, they're kind of, again, they jump all over, but I do want to go through them because, especially as you're going through your zoning code rewrite, it's an important, these are important things to remember. So, one, townships can't force the discontinuance of a lawful, nonconforming use. So, what's a lawful, nonconforming use? You might hear it something as it's grandfathered in, or that type of thing. Basically, a lawful, nonconforming use is something, is a use that was at one point in time permitted in the zoning resolution. At some point, the zoning resolution changed, and even though it's nonconforming and no longer conforms with the zoning resolution, it is lawful, because again, you know, we didn't land on Plymouth Rock, Plymouth Rock landed on me, or something like that, you know, I had my property and was using it lawful, and you changed the law, I should still, you shouldn't be able to take that property right from me. Again, foundation and property rights, so. So, again, townships can't force the, they can't take away lawful, nonconforming uses, they have to make some reasonable provisions to allow for some changes, or if your use gets burned down, you can rebuild it, that type of thing. Another thing, another restriction, townships, the zoning resolution has to classify outdoor advertising as a business use, and has to permit advertising in districts zoned for industry, business, trade, or lands used for agricultural purposes. So, makes sense, if I've got a business of some sort, I need to be able to advertise, and townships can't prevent businesses from doing that. In Ohio, ag is king, so moving on to Item 3 on Page 2, townships can't prohibit the use of agricultural purposes. Anytime there's an ag question, it basically, I basically pull out a flow chart in my office, because at the top, the townships can't prohibit agricultural buildings or uses unless, and then there's, there's a series of carve-outs to that prohibition, and so all of that is to say that if for some reason an ag use ends up in front of you folks, which I'm not sure why it would necessarily, it's more on the, more on the BZA side if anything, I suspect Robin will be heavily involved and may get our office involved as well. But again, yes.
Okay, I actually do have a question, perhaps regarding agriculture use or something like that.
Yeah.
And outdoor advertising. Right now, it says, you know, you can do outdoor advertising in, you know, area zone for industry, business, trade, agriculture, does it, is that specific for that use, or is that like a billboard that you can hire? For example, perhaps not in our township, in other areas, there seems to be billboards along 23 and things of that nature, that are perhaps not applicable to the use of said property, but is advertisement for another type of business.
So, I think that, I think that there are layers to that.
Okay.
What I would say is, so classifying advertising as a business use does not prevent sign restrictions in terms of sizes, size, height, illumination, that type of thing. I'm trying to think of...
So, like I'm a, I own a bunch of land off of 23, can I lease it out to a bunch of billboard companies for any business use whatsoever?
Not whatsoever, because it's not, so this restriction is not, it does not prevent the township from restricting signage or advertising. What it is saying is outdoor advertising is a business, is considered a business use, and so if, if a advertising of some sort is, and that just goes, and I'm sorry, that just goes to the use side of things, not the other area standards that you might have. So, if a...
Does a, if you own the land, do you have to come to the zoning commission to apply to put up a billboard? Is that...
It would depend. I mean, generally, billboards would fall under our signage regulations, which depending on the type of sign, you know, you may need a permit, you may need to get special permission, either through rezoning or amending the zoning through the zoning commission, or through a variance from the BZA. I mean, so one thing that, you know, and we'll talk about this more in our zoning code rewrite, we haven't really gotten to the signage section yet. There's been a change in the last 10 years in how local governments regulate signage to where we're not really supposed to regulate the content of signage. But, so we can't, and we can't say, okay, you know, your property is zoned for commercial, it means that, you know, they can have some kind of advertising signage. But we can regulate the size of that signage, the height of that signage, so that that doesn't necessarily mean that billboards, you know, we can't say you can't have any signs, but that doesn't mean that they can have giant billboards, whether they're advertising for themselves or whether it's on behalf of someone.
They would still have to follow the size based on the setback and all that other stuff, how much frontage they have for...
Yeah, for example, in Board of Zoning Appeals, we used to approve certain type of signage, even like a property, they're allowed to do like small business, and they're allowed to do advertisement on certain heights and then restrictions of the verbiage wording, things like that. So, we had some materials to follow and then approve, or sometimes it doesn't need any approval, like there are certain setbacks which allows the usage for the property for any type of yard size. Now, I have a question about this, when it comes to the classify outdoor advertising, is there like a material or anywhere where we can refer and determine whether, how do we, you know, you know, classify? Like we need to have some kind of materials or anything to follow?
Sure.
Anything like that, like a content of article of contents or anything?
So, that doesn't, so the requirement that it has to be classified as a particular use does not impact, you know, if certain materials need to be used or architectural standards that the zoning resolution may identify. Just at the end of the day, it's preventing a situation where someone says, I want to open my business, and the township zoning resolution says, well, you can have the business there, but having a sign of some sort is not a permitted use. It's an excess, you know, think of accessory uses that come about, preventing someone from making an argument of that, you know, signage is considered an accessory use and because it's not permitted in the zoning district, you know, it just cut, cut that out, and basically, you know, the thought being signage and these other uses are so integral to the operations of business, so like you can have, again, aesthetic and height and area standards, but just in terms of, you know, we're not going to, you can't prohibit these businesses from having any outdoor advertising, period, because, because it somehow doesn't match the use, that type of thing.
Can I, can we go back to, because I really want to pull on this thread a little more to, to get better understanding, because oftentimes I hear it said, well, it's within the guidelines, this is what we have to do, so I have to approve it, which I don't agree with it, I thought maybe I'm supposed to have a voice in or vote in this thing. Back to your, the idea of promoting the public convenience, comfort, prosperity, and general welfare. What is the degree of, okay, yeah, the proposal meets all of the zoning requirements, however, I don't think it's gonna, it fits the general welfare of the area, community, or what have you.
Yep.
How do you either justify that, or, because I don't want to, A, I'm not going to be put in a box, right, that it's, well, if it checks all these things, I have to say yes, even though I may disagree with it being a benefit to the general welfare of the community.
Yeah, so I, can I, that is a fantastic question, and that is, can we, can we put a pin on that one?
Yeah, please.
Okay, wonderful, because that, that is a great question, and in order for me to answer it completely.
Yeah.
I want to hit on a few other things, but no, that is, that is great, and that, I mean, that's a fundamental, and that's, again, that's something I really want to focus on, so thank, we will get to that. We spoke, we spoke about ag. Another restriction, townships are not able to regulate public utilities or railways. The, the exception to that is that townships can regulate telecommunication towers located in area zone for residential use. Again, I go back to the railroads and utilities have great lobbyists, so.
Absolutely.
Also, those who sell booze have great lobbyists. Townships can't prohibit the sale or use of alcoholic beverages in areas where retail, business, hotel, lunchroom, and restaurants are permitted, so, and obviously, I mean, liquor laws, that's a whole other thing outside of zoning, but in terms of township's ability to regulate uses, the townships are not able to say, you can't have liquor, you know, regardless of the liquor laws, that sort of thing, you can't have liquor if your establishment is in those particular districts where those uses are permitted. Townships can't prohibit permanently cited manufacturing homes in residential districts, and this is a newer, a newer restriction, townships have the ability to regulate small wind farms and small solar facilities. What are small wind farms? What are small solar facilities? The revised code defines basically the limits of each of those facilities, and if a facility doesn't fall under that threshold, then it's the Ohio Siding Board that is the governing entity. And your existing zoning resolution and the new zoning resolution includes restrictions on both of these, I'm pretty sure, I know the new ones...
Our current code actually does not.
It doesn't?
But our draft code does.
Okay, draft code does, wonderful. Okay, moving into creation and function.
So, you're not, so, you're not allowed, you can regulate those as far as size, solar and wind farms? Is that, is that what the Ohio Code says?
So, you, in terms of regulation, that means that the township is able, for those uses under that threshold, the township's able to regulate, you know, like any other business, in terms of what district it's an appropriate use. You know, we've got some townships that have basically said there are prohibited uses in all districts, we've got some townships that have identified them as conditional uses in certain, and I, and that's, that's an exercise that has been, in terms of drafting or working through your own zoning code rewrite, I know that's something that Robin and I have worked through, in terms of, you know, what, what solar facilities are permitted and that type of thing.
So, that'd be possible for a township to say, no, we really don't want those in a township, for whatever reason, and they, because the Ohio Resi- revised code doesn't over, okay.
Only, only the small, only the small facilities, if it was a lot, but the township could prohibit small, those small facilities. If it was, if it's something above, if it's not considered small, then the township does not have the ability to regulate it all, and the township can't prohibit it.
Really?
And then, and then at that point, it is the, again, the Ohio Power and Siding Board that's responsible.
So, if they came in and bought the land and they were large enough, it's already done, done deal.
Yeah, but I think you also have to know what the definition of small is, right?
Yeah.
Because according to this, it means solar panels and associated facilities with a single interconnection to the electrical grid and design for capable of operation at an aggregate capacity of less than 50 megawatts.
And I think that's going to define itself, because if somebody large comes in, where do you know, it's a done deal? If somebody comes in where you know it's not a done deal, they're small enough to be regulated. I think that, that situation is going to take care of itself.
So, this is Ohio Bill, Senate Bill 52, that was...
Yeah, we're not, we're not going to get that opportunity to decide whether they're big or small. If they're small enough, they'll be here, if they're big enough, done deal, they don't need to show up here.
Yeah, and that cutoff is done by the, the power capacity for solar, it's that 50-megawatt capacity, which is a fairly large facility.
Because an average one-megawatt takes about four to five minimum acres, and typically it takes about six, seven acres.
Interesting, thank you very much.
So, 250 acres, I don't think there is that much land here.
Yeah.
So, we don't even need to worry about...
That would be an expensive, small facility.
250 acres, yeah.
Wow. Great question.
So, yeah, anything that comes here, we will be able to regulate and say no.
Okay, zoning commission itself, that is found in Chapter 519.04 of the revised code, says that you need to have five members and two alternates. Again, you act in a legislative capacity for, mostly with respect to rezonings, but you also act in an administrative capacity when it comes to, or you can, with respect to plan developments and that type of thing, with development text. You're required to adopt rules and regulations, which I don't know if you guys do that annually or if you set it and forget it type of thing, so, so you've got rules in place and you keep those, keep on, keeping on, and hopefully you're, you know, periodically taking a look at them, that sort of thing. You're required to keep a record of your actions, you're supposed, you have to keep minutes, I know that you folks do that. You are a body, you're a body that's subject to the Ohio Sunshine laws, which means that you need to conduct your meetings, your discussions in a public meeting that has been noticed, where the public has an opportunity to come and watch you folks do the business of the You need to be careful that at any time a quorum of the zoning commission isn't somewhere having a conversation, you're a little unique, because that means three people, three people can't get together. If there are two of you, that's not a quorum, and that sort of thing, but obviously being careful about perception and that type of thing. But again, it's a, it's a quorum of the commission can't be together and having conversations. I also, this is a good time to, a word of caution for reply all emails, I suspect that Robin sends you guys the, you know, meeting packet, and it's easy to say, oh, you know, ask a question here, and so just don't reply all. I beg of you, it's easy, it's easy for things to escalate, and you can walk into an accidental open meetings violation by those reply all conversations. Zoning commission does not have the ability to enter into executive session, so if you have an app of rezoning application in front of you, the board needs to have the discussions out in the open, that is different from the Board of Zoning Appeals, which can move into private deliberations. The, kind of the difference I give, again, because you're acting in a legislative capacity and you're writing law, the difference with the BZA, they're acting as a judge, and they have to have one decision come out, and if you're in front of a judge at a trial, you don't get to hear the decision-making process in their head, and so the Board of Zoning Appeals needs to have an opportunity, I'm assuming they can't hear, hopefully they can't hear each other's voices in their head, otherwise that's a whole other problem. But, but again, that's why the Board of Zoning Appeals is able to go into private deliberation, and you folks generally are not.
So, just in a general question, is it that in the public forum you're having the conversation, like I said to my friend the other day that I need to go to the restroom, does that need to be a public comment me saying that, or I can whisper and say, hey, I need to go to the restroom?
No, that, that is perfectly fine.
Oh, whatever. What page are we on?
No, that's fine, it's interesting, so that, that is not, that is not an issue, but what is interesting, there has been case law where, you know, not necessarily a zoning commission, but a public body was having a meeting, but they were all whispering to each other.
Yeah.
And, and so the audience was here, but they're, you know, all, they're speaking so quietly that there's a lawsuit about it, and it basically was like, come on, guys, you know, like, come on, that's not, you know, if you're speaking so quietly or having a back turn and that sort of thing, so. I would, I would also argue that you asking your neighbor if you can run to the restroom is, is not public, a discussion of public business, so.
And I say generally, yes, but if people need to give me a sign if we need a break, like a general break, so everyone can have like, you know, 10 minutes, get a drink of water, meet back.
Five-minute adjournment, you know, or a five, maybe, don't adjourn the meeting, but a five-minute recess, or something like that. Absolutely, that's important.
They've got to send me, send me a note or a signal or something.
Yeah, yeah. So, so townships are able to regulate zoning, quote... So, so townships are able to regulate zoning, quote, in accordance with a comprehensive plan. You folks, I don't, I don't have, I'm not going to go into what a comprehensive plan is all that much, because you folks actually have one, which is great, but sometimes I walk into zoning commissions and they're like, well, what's that? And I say, well, you have one, even if you don't think you do, you need to say it's your zoning map, if nothing else. But basically, it's, it's to prevent piecemeal, it's to prevent spot zoning, you know, your comprehensive plan at the end of the day, I describe it as, it's the aspirational view of what do you want the township to look like, what do you want zones to look like? It goes towards preventing a situation where you're accused of making an unreasonable or arbitrary decision. You know, again, the aspirational document, if you, if someone comes in and, you know, wants to rezone property to something, and you have the hearing, you look at the comp plan, and for a variety of reasons, you're like, look, it just doesn't match. If the comp plan says one thing and the application is for another, that's one kind of tool in your toolbox that lends itself more towards, you know, this wasn't an unreasonable or arbitrary decision, it was part of, again, the aspirational overall plan for land use in the township.
The comp plan seems to be the legal authority that the township could use, that if something was outside of the comp plan, they could say, nope, we're outside the comp plan, comp plan is our essential law for zoning. I've heard it been described as, as that kind of strength.
So what I would say to that is, again, it is aspirational, and just because something is different than the comprehensive plan, doesn't mean that, because theoretically, that could be an arbitrary decision of, well, the comp plan says this, and so we're denying it. So I, I wouldn't, again, it's not the, the live and die, and the comp plan is a living document that should be updated from time to time. I hate going into a township where they have a comp plan, but it hasn't been updated for 25 years, and they're like, this isn't what our township looks like at all. So again, it's, it's a, it's, again, the aspirational goal of, look, we'd like it, everything's farmland right now, but we'd like a commercial corridor here. You know, we'd like our residential, we'd like our residential districts over here, that type of thing.
I'm going to ask you a legal question. Back to my, back to my court issue, from the legal perspective, let's say we had somebody here, no one named a case, no one got over, but we did have one, in my opinion, was written tightly, done, but it wasn't exactly in the comp plan. But it was a good plan, good use for the land, everything was good, tightly written, so it couldn't be extended outward. It was used that, well, this isn't part of the comp plan, so it got rejected.
So, again, what I would say is, is, you know-
Where, where's the law with that? Let's say, let's say these people wanted to take it a step further, and say, and use this strength, and go take that to court. Where would they have been? Would, would the comp plan have been strong enough to have overridden any lawsuit?
So, the, that goes to a variety of fact, lawyers love the phrase, it depends. And so, I mean, it, it really does depend, and it goes towards, you know, to a bit of Mr. Pierce's question as well, of how do you make a decision? You know, what goes into the decision? And frankly, you know, it always makes me queasy when anybody makes a decision based on one factor, and if the one factor is, well, the, it's the, like, it doesn't fit the comp plan, just makes me, I'm like, I don't know. Don't know if it's going to work. But again, it's, so that's why when you're, and you folks will get to what, you know, you guys make recommendations, but just turning to the trustees' side of things, you know, when the trustees are having, are making their decision, that's why it's important to kind of elaborate on why they're, you know, show your work and why are you making this decision, yes or no? So that way, again, it comes back to, if someone's going to file a lawsuit and challenge the decision, you know, was it arbitrary, was it, that type of thing, so.
So, yeah, it, it depends.
It depends.
Of the legal situation, it depends. That isn't a necessar-, necessarily an absolute winner, it depends on all the other factors around that.
Yep.
Okay.
I have one question for you. So when you say the show your work scenario, so when we're either approving, denying, we should really, I know, I think Christine, you summarize that as the chair a lot of times, but should we individually also give our reason for approval denial?
Um, it depends.
Okay.
And, and again, for the zoning commission, it's not as, it is, let me think of how to say this. I mean, the chair may be the one who's making the motion, or making the recommendation. And so, you know, whoever is making the, the recommendation, that's kind of the decision of the body, and so that should be consistent. But I do think, you know, if, if the commission members want to say why they are voting the way that they are, and showing their work that way, then that certainly-
And the reason I ask is because you said for the trustees to rely on, so.
I was going to kind of piggyback on that, you know, and I don't know to what degree the trustees, other than seeing, hey, what was the recommendation that came forward? Do they really go and read the transcript to say, tell me what, you know, X, Y, and Z said, who voted against it, or what have you? But I was, I was thinking about just that, in some cases, there seems to be a reason to state why you're for or against, that may provide the trustee with a thought of-
Or insight.
Didn't think about that, right? Or, which I had a question about this today, as I was thinking, I, I heard it previously, but I forgot what the story was. So when we make a recommendation, it goes forward, attending the trustee's meeting, and one may want to have thoughts on it, not from a commission perspective, but a member of the community perspective, meaning it could save me from having to make the trip, but being able to put my comments, assuming they would read it, but willing to make that trip as well as an individual. So that's kind of my thought of, do they review transcripts? Like, I presume they're available to them, I don't know if they necessarily review them per se.
So, so let me put a pin in that one as well. I've got, I'm, I'm starting to write a list of your questions. I'm like, you're hitting, you're hitting the high notes, I'll tell you why.
I'd also like to add to that.
Yeah.
In the past, I have had trustees contact me and ask me why I voted the way I did.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so have I, so. I, I think adding that as a reason is probably a, a good thing, and I think it's likely, in my opinion, that there probably would be red, you know, if you had a reason for voting yes or no on a particular case.
So if we could just address all of that together at the same time, of how to let the trustees know why we made the decision we made, but not stepping outside of what we as zoning commission members are ethically, should be doing, yeah.
And at the end of the day, you know, the, you, the zoning commission makes a recommendation as one. And so, you know, your, your individual, how you as an individual rendering that decision, at that point, it almost takes a backseat, because it, you know, the kind of last word is, well, the zoning commission as a whole made this recommendation. And we'll, and we'll get into recommendations here in, in just a little bit. I'm going to, I think we've hit on comp plan, so I will keep moving on that.
While you're putting pins on two or three questions, I would like to add to that question.
Yes.
As to, I did not see it in here, in my custody glance, but we have not got to it yet, I believe. What do you think about an applicant's ability to ask for annexation out of the township?
Okay.
When, when they're bordering and get, and want to get into maybe City of Columbus or City of Delaware?
Or Westerland.
Just because-
Depends where you're located.
Yeah, exactly. So if they want to annex out of it because they previously ordered a rejection of it, so.
Nope, that is, I do not have something in here about that, and so I will, I will mention that. Annexation is, annexation is, is the bane of a lot of township's existence. Orange and other townships in Delaware County are in kind of a unique situat-, it's not such, such of a threat as necessarily Franklin County, in part because of Delco Water. Water and sewer is a huge issue with annexation and a threat of annexation. But, setting that aside, what are, in Orange Township, you know, what are some possible reasons for people to annex? There might be a water and sewer issue, but a lot of times it is, it's a bit of games, political gamesmanship. And there are times when, you know, an applicant may have a project that the township doesn't want or doesn't like, but they may say, well, okay, I know you don't like this, but I can annex into the city, and they're going to give that to me. And, and maybe it's not just the use, maybe it's, and they're going to give me some development incentives of some sort. You know, they're going to do some other things for me. So it is, I mean, it, it's a push and pull. In terms of annexation process, so there are a few different ways that property can annex into a city. It was, at this point, about 15 years ago, there was a major overhaul to the annexation laws, and predominantly, the, the method that most property owners use to annex, it's called a type-two annexation. And what that means is, if they meet certain statutory checkmarks in terms of, I mean, it really is like trivia at that point, it's, okay, you know, what's the acreage, what's the contiguous, that type of thing, the township can't do anything to stop it. But, the, again, give and take, the General Assembly, when they said, all right, we're going to make it very easy for property to annex under type-two, we're going to, the, the city won't be able to, what's known as conform its boundaries, which would basically kick the township out. And so, I'm a visual person, you know, if, if this is township property that's annexed into a city, the township doesn't go away, the township still receives real estate taxes off of that property. Township's now subject to the village, or the, the city or villages' real estate taxes as well. But that's the give and take of, okay, townships, you know, it's easy to annex, but we're not going to dig away at your real estate tax.
Can that be a reason to approve or disapprove?
The threat of annexation? So, um-
You're getting, you're seeing-
I see what you're saying. So realistically, um, let me think of how to say that. I think you could probably find other valid reasons for approving something. Do I think the threat in and of itself, um-
Not specifically mentioned.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's subtly mentioned.
But then, you see the property surrounded.
And then, yeah.
And then, there is a use case that they're bringing that we don't like, frankly, there are concerns. But then, there is a good chance, if disapproved, could go to annexation and, and annex out of this to Columbus, and they get approved, because the, it's a business, and it's still going to be there at the end of that.
Yeah, it'll still be in the same location, just a different jurisdiction.
Is that-
That's a little slick.
Yeah.
See, we're, we're going with that.
But it's happened before.
Oh, absolutely. And I, and I don't have a clear-cut answer. What I can say is, I don't think you should let the, the, only the threat of annexation truly guide your decision, because the flip side of that is, you know, I, I, Orange Township, in terms of getting something through from a zoning perspective, is a heck of a lot easier than some other places, you know, some other cities and that sort of thing. And so it's like, all right, you might threaten annexation, but there may be a cost somewhere else. So, so what I would say is, um-
You're going to answer.
Yeah. And there may be, again, there absolutely may be a project where you're just like, you know, we just can't in good conscience make a recommendation. And, and again, that's, we haven't even gotten to the recommendation aspect of it, but that's kind of a good, a nice part of being on the zoning commission. It's like, all right, trustees, you guys are going to, you know, you guys are the folks who, you know, where the, do you really want, are, you know, are the trustees really concerned about annexation, and is that kind of the, the tipping point for them? But that, that's a, that's a great question in terms of, you know, you think of all of the reasons to say no, and the possible impact on the community and that sort of thing, but I don't know that I've had someone ask the question of, shouldn't you say yes because of the threat of, of annexation? So that was a great question. Any other questions on annexation before we move on? Wonderful. I'm going to, I'm going to breeze through the zoning amendment process, because after zoning amendment process, we're going to dig into the, the rezoning hearings, the decision-making process, which is where I think most of your questions are, or a lot of the questions that, that I've, I've put a pin in. In terms of zoning amendments, there are three ways that a zoning amendment can get kicked off. Either the trustees can initiate, you folks can initiate, or an app, a property owner can initiate a zoning amendment. The global process for an amendment is, zoning commission has to hold a hearing, you make a recommendation, your recommendation can be one of three things. You can recommend approval, you can recommend denial, you can recommend approval with modifications to an application. After you make your recommendation, the trustees have to hold a hearing, and it's the same thing over again. At that point, their decision is, do they approve your recommendation, deny your recommendation, or approve your recommendation with modifications? That, again, that's the, that's the overall. Part of one additional requirement is that when an application is commenced, it needs to go to regional planning for review, which is, which is great, because regional planning basically provide, you know, that's just like another land use expert providing their opinion on, you know, and feedback on an application and that sort of thing.
Just curious, real quick, is the heater on in this place? It's a little chilly to me.
I, I'm, I do believe it's on, I can see if I can adjust it.
Is anybody else cold, or is it just me?
I just feel it every now and then.
Yeah, it's a little, little chilly up here, I apologize.
One additional item, so with a zoning amendment, it becomes 30, it becomes effective 30 days after the board renders a decision. There's also an opportunity for a zoning amendment for the, the public to circulate a petition during that time period, and put the amendment on referendum, which basically gives the, the public of Orange Township the opportunity to overturn the trustee's decision.
I like that, we should tell that more often.
Oh, the referendum?
Yeah.
Yeah. What I would say, because I, my next, my next comment was going to be, you guys haven't really, you have not really, to my knowledge, I can't think of a, a referendum that you guys have had. Other Delaware County townships have had referendums. Jerome Township out in Union County a few years ago, it was, it was every single application. Situations where it's like, look, you, the trustees have to, legally you have to approve this, because it will be unreasonable, arbitrary, unconstitutional if they deny it. And there was a group of people who just had the referendum system down, they'd get it on referendum, it would be denied, and it just was this endless cycle of lawsuits. It was so, it was such a mess, and eventually the General Assembly changed the referendum process to, to at least increase some of the percentages. But, but yeah, so, so the risk then, so kind of walking down the line of, of referendum. So then, what, what often happens, if something is voted down in referendum, the developer, the property owner will file a lawsuit against the township in federal court, making one of these constitutionality claims. At that point, the trustees have the ability to settle the lawsuit. And so, so that's the, I mean, that's the give and take of it all, of, you know, if, especially in a situation where the trustees approve the decision, if it gets overturned in referendum and it ends up back in court, the trustees may very well make the same decision again. So, I'm trying to think of a situation, I don't know if I can think of a situation, well, anyways, where basic, you know, in terms of the settlement, if it kind of looked a little odd. But anyways, that's an aside.
So most developers, I mean, in those cases where the, because that seems like if the, if the, I'm just curious, exploring this thing here. But it seems like if the community votes against whatever it is, and the, seems like that ought to be it. It seems like it shouldn't be a, because now you're asking everybody to weigh, weigh in on it, not just those that you trusted with. So for a developer to come and sue and prospectively- So for a developer to come and sue and prospectively, you know...
So what I, and again, and, and I said developer, I should've just said property owner.
Anybody, anybody.
Because at the, at the end of the day, it, it comes back to property rights. And if, um, you know, it's like, so what am I supposed to use my property for? You want it to be, I, I don't want it to be vacant farmland, I wanna put a development, I wanna put, you know, I wanna, um, you know, build new homes or an apartment or a business development. And I went through the process and, and oftentimes, like, and I met the criteria. And then, people who don't own my property are telling me, I can't do anything with it. So, so that, and that's the give and take. And, and again, the, the referendum process is because it's a legislative, you know, it's, it's because you're on the legislative side of things, that's the, um, that's the, the check and balance sort of thing.
Can you speak again about the referendum process itself, like?
Yeah.
How, how many people have to gather, like, what is, is there a percentage of population?
So, and because the law recently changed, um, I am going to screw this up. So it is a percentage of, um, the electors who voted in the last governatorial election. They also amended it, they amended it to, there are a few layers.
Yeah, I, so I believe it's fourteen percent of that number.
Yep, it used to be ten percent.
I thought it was eight.
Yeah, but I thought you also had to first get a number of people to agree to take it to the referendum series so it appears on the ballot. So you have to go through like the petition.
They have to circulate a petition and then file the petition with the trustees and the trustees then send it to the Board of Election and, and move through that process. But so it, it is...
I, I do believe it's fourteen percent. Um, I actually, I did this math, I think there's been a gubernatorial election since then, so this math has probably changed, but it was somewhere around two thousand signatures in Orange Township. And that's, that's valid, you know, certified by the Board of Elections that these are electors who live in these, at these addresses.
So about two thousand citizenship, citizens have to sign the petition for it to go to the referendum process. And then, when it's voted upon in the referendum, how many people have to...
So that would be majority of the entire township.
Yep, yep, majority of the people who cast their vote, it's, it's fifty percent of whoever votes. Um, the referendum, there is a time period for submitting a referendum, it's that thirty-day period from... So basically, the, the trustees make a decision and thirty days from now, the referendum petitions need to either be filed or the, um, amendment takes effect. Okay, referendums.
Yeah, I have a question, but I don't know what it was.
Moving into the zoning hearing itself and, and more of, you know, decision-making as we, as we kind of...
Oh, my question, I apologize. We talked about the trustees being sued. Is there ever a reason or concern for us personally, individually, or is the commission to be sued?
Uh, potentially, because anyone can sue anybody and, and often people are bad at naming the right parties in a lawsuit. Uh, what I, what I will say, um, what I will say is, if a, I mean, realistically, it wouldn't, because again, you're the, the recommending body. But in the event the zoning commission were named in a lawsuit, or if you were individually named in a lawsuit because of your role on the zoning commission, the township has insurance and you're covered under the directors and officers' insurance. So, we, but, but at the end of the day, in that scenario, it's the, the trustees who are the ones kind of dealing with the circus of the lawsuit. But, uh, again, I've seen all sorts of lawsuits where they, where folks, again, it's, it's, they don't necessarily name the right people or all of the people. But, but yeah, that's, that's important. Again, you guys are, you know, this, you, you do this out of the, the spirit of public service more than anything else. And so, um, yeah, you should not have to, unfortunately, you don't have to, to have that hanging over your back.
Just checking.
Absolutely. All right, so zoning hearing itself, and, and I, I, I am probably gonna repeat a lot of things that you guys already do, but especially since you're in a training, I want to, there may be something that maybe you used to do and you don't do anymore, or you just hadn't thought about, and so that's, that's, if I repeat something, then I apologize and, and just continue on. But, um, zoning commission, as of, which the BZA cannot do this, the zoning commission does have the ability to put limits on, um, the length of time somebody speaks, um, the number of people that speak, that type of thing. Need to decide that before, what I would say, you, those, those rules need to be put in place before the hearing starts, um, to be announced. And I know at the, um, I was here at the dispensary hearing and, and, um, the, the chair said, "Listen, everybody, let's try to keep it short, we need to move through," and eventually it was, "All right, we're gonna, we're gonna move on after some time." So, um, I always, I also like to encourage people, if it's a packed house, um, if you want to limit the time, that's a good idea. Be consistent with your application, you don't want one person going for ten minutes and then the next person saying, "Well, you didn't cut that person off," so be consistent. I also think it's, in terms of crowd management, it is helpful to tell people, you don't have to repeat what your neighbor has said. If after a ton, if we're all concerned about the lights or the, you know, the se- the noise that might come off of it, just reiterate, "Look, I, these are my concerns as well, but you don't need to go through the whole thing." Again, trying to just keep, keep people moving through while providing their pers- giving them the opportunity to provide their perspective to you. I also think it is good practice to tell the audience to address the commission and not to address the applicant. Because, and, and so, a little bit is okay, but sometimes it can get out of control and it turns into the, the witness having a conversation with the applicant. And so sometimes it's, sometimes it's a good idea just to say, "Look, um, you know, address the commission. If you have questions, then the commission will ask that of the applicant when we're done here." Because again, it, it, it just can, it can escalate, it can add tension, it can, you know, draw things out and that sort of thing. So, um, just crowd management style. Zoning commission is able to have multiple meetings, so, um, if you listen to an applicant and, um, you're not satisfied with, you don't feel that they have all the information, or they say, "Look, let me, let me come back and I'll get that information for you." You will need to move to, um, continue the application to a time, date, place certain. Don't, don't table the application, uh, don't close the hearing, because at that point, i- it's pretty much done. And, and the township would have to re-notice in order for the, the hearing to, um, come back before you again. So again, continue to time, date, place certain. Get the questions sometimes, again, you guys have alternates, and if an application is continued, you know, you might have one set of commission members for part one and a couple different members for part two. And people say, "Well, you know, I wasn't here for part one, what do I do, how do I address this?" What I would say is, if, if that happens and you're here for part two and not part one, on the, on, first of all, if you, um, you know, if you want to participate, um, what I would say is, is, you know, if you believe that you can get caught up on that first part of the hearing, you listen to the, the trans, or watch, watch the video or read the transcript or, or that sort of thing. You know, I think you're probably up to speed at that point and ready for the, for the hearing.
I'm sorry, I mean, you touched off there, I apologize.
No. I was gonna say, and, and it, um, I also think it's good practice to say on the record then, so, so, you know, so that way the applicant is like, "Wait a minute, Mr. Pierce wasn't here." So that way, you know, saying, "Look, I wasn't here the last time you were here, but I, I am prepared, I watched the video, I'm up to speed." Just so that way, it's clear, and just, again, good practice. Okay, I, give me just a second, I'm looking at some of my notes. Okay, so going into decision-making, um, because you are a legislative body, you can listen to the opinions of the, the people who provide you with information, they are not providing you with sworn testimony. If they say, um, "I don't think this fits because X, Y, and Z," they don't have to have scientific evidence behind, that backs up that. They can, they can provide you with an opinion. In terms of, of things that are appropriate to consider, again, the comp plan, regional planning's recommendation, zoning staff, you know, in the staff report, obviously, the, I know Robin and, and the zoning department put together a, a very comprehensive staff report. Testimony and public comment, the information that the public provides to you. There's a note on here, um, about schools and traffic, because those are, I mean, every, every hearing is the impact. And so here, here is, um, from, from the legal perspective, there is a Supreme Court of Ohio decision that specifically says that traffic cannot be used as a primary reason for making a, um, a decision. And the focus that, that court, or that decision went on to say, again, that the focus from a zoning concern should be offering someone the greatest use and enjoyment of their land. So traffic, uh, on its own, can't be used as a factor. It can be used as a multitude of factors, but I, I urge people to use it with extreme caution for a few reasons. One, any project is going to impact traffic, period, that is the nature of, of a change. Unless you're turning it into farmland, which is not reasonable. Again, if you're, if you're, you know, converting it back into farmland, which is just not reasonable. So traffic, there's gonna be some impact of traffic for, for anything that happens. Item two, traffic is dictated by the county engineer's office. And so, again, your, your role in your world is, is land use, and if there's a negative impact on the roads, the engineer's office has to address that appropriately. That's, you know, that's their, that's their lane, oh boy, sorry.
That was good.
Get her out of here. But that, that's, you know, that's their, um, you know, that's their wheelhouse and all of that. But, traffic, there is, there is case law that says, while it can't be the only reason, it can be one of the factors, again, with respect to general, general welfare of the community. Schools.
Would, would it ever be appropriate to say to the audience, so to speak, just what you said, you know, I know we usually say...
I, I say it, so I help sell.
You say that traffic is, is governed by...
Yeah, because traffic is governed by the county engineer, just like water runoff, stormwater concerns, that's also regulated by the county engineer. You know, we can get, if we're lucky, we might have their recommendation ahead of time, that they've gotten sign-off by the county engineer, or the county engineer's done a preliminary review. If we have a letter, that's great, but not all that can stop that.
So is it appropriate to say, um, so you don't, you know, you don't have to tell me about your traffic story, right? E- every project is impacted by traffic, if you're gonna get up and tell me about traffic, I've already considered that because of this group, and there's nothing I can do about the traffic story. So come with something substantive that you want, really want me to consider, so I can really consider that.
But they consider that to be substantive.
Well, I, I just told them it's not substantive. Based on whose responsibility.
How many meetings have we had where they bring up traffic? And how they don't want a cut-through road there, or how they want a traffic light or don't want a traffic light, want a curb cut, don't want a curb cut, and a lot of that is out of our control.
We let them say it though.
We let them say it so they feel like they're heard.
I, I was trying to cut them off at the gate just to say, "Don't waste my time," because I want you to, you know, but...
I'm, I'm interested in her answer, because, because that, that is the absolute truth, that's a big, bold truth. That Delaware County handles all the traffic, it handles all the water, but... I'm interested in your answer, I really am, because, because I, I was here with Michelle one time and, and, and one of the people from one of the audience had asked those questions, and I didn't say anything, but she did not answer the question that way, the Delaware County controls these things. But I'm thinking, okay, well, I'm not in any position to override Michelle who's sitting there, so I'm gonna ask her later, "Why didn't you tell him just this basic truth of how this works?"
What I, what I would say is, it go, I think it goes back towards crowd management more than anything else. You know, the, a lot, how many times has someone come in here and said, "I've never been to one of these things before." And so again, they're, they're just speaking from the heart of their concerns and the concern, one of the top concerns is gonna be traffic. So I think it is a, in terms of, if, if every single person gets up and the room is also starting to bubble on traffic, you know, just shutting it down and saying, "Folks, I don't like traffic either, I, we hear you, it is not in our purview."
I just tried to do the, the proactive, preventive maintenance kind of thing. Let me educate you, you know, in advance.
Thought on that, I mean, like, cut me if I'm wrong, uh, with the zoning appeals, right? We have to deal with the, what is the variance in front of us, and we are not allowed to suggest, like, which is not in this case. So what I'm trying to say is, like, when you say, like, you can, you will ask them to consider something, I believe we are, I mean, like, that's how the appeals worked. Is it the same here? We are not supposed to suggest them anything other than whatever we have in front of us.
Well, and that goes back to kind of the differences between the zoning commission and the BZA, because the BZA is acting as a judge, and, and you're exactly right of, "I'm a judge, I may ask some clarifying questions, but it's not my job to make your arguments for you." You know, applicant, you need to lay your case, um, the people who wanna speak against it or in favor of it, they can provide evidence, you know, pro or, or against, um, but it's not my job to make your argument for you. Here, because you're acting in a legislative capacity, it, it is almost, um, and I know we've talked about traffic, but, um, you know, it is kind of a lobbying moment, and so someone may have an opinion that you're like, "All right, I, I would like more information on your perspective." Your op- why is your, why do you feel that way? Why is your opinion, you know, you may have a different opinion that I'm just not aware of about this? And so again, thinking on, again, it, it, they are, they are allowed to lobby, you folks. But, with traffic, and, and that's a very, I get it, it's compa- you know, it's important to people. And, um, that's just not something that you can make your sole decision on.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Especially when they bring safety of kids playing, because that is a land use.
Yeah, and, and I get it, I completely, and then that moves into, to schools, a similar thing of the impact on schools and that sort of thing. There is, so again, there, there is some case law that suggests that traffic in schools can be included as part of the overall general wel- welfare, you know, part of the decision for the overall general, general welfare for approving or denying a, um, an application. But similarly with schools, um, any residential development is probably going to bring at least one student. There's going to be some level of an impact on schools. And it's not the zoning commission's purview of whether or not the schools have the resources to address that change. At the end of the day, that's the school district, and they have to make the decisions on, on the size of schools, on the needs of teachers, on, on the funding options, if they need to have a levy. So again, and, and again, the traffic schools, those are, traffic schools' property values, those are kind of the, you know, those are, are the big-ticket items that I'm sure you folks just see over and over again, so, um...
So those are not in our purview, but if you made that bold statement when the room's full of people, you're going to have lots of very angry people.
Yes, and, and again, going back to the crowd management side of things of like, "Listen, folks, I completely understand, like, tra- I don't like traffic, I don't like impact on schools, but from our perspective, you know, again, that's, that is the engineer's office, that is the school district's purview," you know, not invalidating what you're saying, but that's just not, it's not, they're not in the right ear at that point, so. But, but absolutely, and that's again, crowd management of how, how that message, how and when, and with what force you, you deliver that message.
Would it be appropriate to say, "Take your complaint to them because they're the ones controlling it?"
I hope it never comes, I hope it never, I hope it never escalates to that point.
And this is difficult for all of us, you know, and, you know, it's, it's particularly differ- difficult for you all because you get crowds of angry people in front of you, but it's all, it's difficult for us as staff as well because, you know, we are the local government. People come to their concerns, uh, come with their concerns to us, and sometimes we just have to direct them to the county engineer's office. And that's not, it's not satisfying for the resident, it's not satisfying for, for us as staff or you as the zoning commission either, I, I recognize that. So just, you know, trying to, to relay that message, as Julie says, with, you know, some, some compassion and understanding. some compassion and understanding, that, so I think, you know, starting at the outset and saying, we're not gonna talk about traffic at all, I don't think that's the answer. But, you know, being able to convey that message somehow.
At some point. So after they get to the first two, they get up and talk about traffic, then you can explain it?
Yeah, I, I-
I don't know, I just-
Yeah, and ultimately, that's, that's up to you as the commission. I, I think for certain projects, you'll know that traffic is going to be a hot button issue from the start, so you might wanna say that at the outset, and just say, you know, we understand that traffic is going to be an issue, but it's not something that we can really base our decision off of. Or if you want to let the conversation go that way, and let it unfold naturally, that's ultimately a, a policy decision for the commission.
That we're not responsible for traffic lights, and curb cuts, and all that other-
And so often, of just letting, and it's just such a delicate balance of, of going with the flow sometimes, and letting someone, you know, just talk and vent, even though it, it, you know, but at some point, it's like, alright, if every single person in here is gonna talk about traffic, we're just never gonna get out of here. So it's, again, it's the, it's the reading the room, it's reading the temperature, and that sort of thing.
The other issue that I've been, been driven crazy sitting up here, is people talking about water. It's the same thing, you know? I've been pulling my hair, I'm listening to people talk about how bad the water is, no, taken care of. Delaware County engineers take care of that? It's out of our purview, completely.
Maybe we should have a list posted.
Water, schools, traffic.
Yes, these things are-
Property values.
Those are not in our purview.
Not in, absolutely.
Or handout, you know, please, you know, while they're sitting there, read this, you know, read this. I don't know, I mean, again, it's an educational thing, in my opinion.
Cute little, nice little check, uh, check, check mark, and check boxes. All right, in terms of, in terms of your decision itself, it, it's majority rules for you, you folks, which I know you're aware of. If you have a tie vote, so in the event that you have an even number of members here, a tie vote means that's a recommendation of denial. So in terms of how the decision is made, again, it's important to articulate what I'll call, what we call a legitimate basis. And I feel like I keep saying the same kind of nebulous terms, you know, reasonable, arbitrary, you know, but, but it really, I mean, that's what it comes down to, is, and, and I know you folks have had those, you know, situations where you're like, look, I might not like, I might not think that the owner of this business is maybe the, the best person, or maybe they don't have the best business plan, or that type of thing, but I'm not here to make a judgment about their business plan. I'm here to make a decision about, is this use compatible in the township? Do the standards, what they're proposing, does it meet the standards? And, and making a decision that way, so, again, just based on that. Like, beware of conditions, so you are able to approve an application with modifications. Because your current zoning resolution is so planned development heavy, you, if you're approving, it's probably with additional divergences rather than truly conditions, but anytime you approve with a condition, or with an additional divergence, or that type of thing, make sure it is clearly articulated. And, and again, I know, I know Robin and staff is, is very helpful in terms of walking you guys through that, but taking a step back, and if the trustees adopt your recommendation, you just want it to be crystal clear of, you know, six, eight months down the line, staff is trying to apply whatever conditions may have been placed on that, and it's like, well, did we really say what we thought we said? Did we really approve what we thought we approved? So just keep that in mind.
I would add, also make sure the applicant understands what those modifications are, and agrees to them.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Sorry. I don't want one of those, he said, she said.
And, and ju- just to, to clear it up, so I, and this is why, when we do have conditions, you know, I, if I know that there's some ahead of time, I'll try to type those out, but sometimes we, you know, additional things come up during the meeting, and so that's why I try to restate that. And then, at, you know, at the end of the hearing, I do send a written copy of that to the applicant, so that they are able to, you know, revise their plans or update their plans accordingly.
So, and, we've been at this for almost an hour and a half. So, you guys have had some, some great questions. So we're gonna move into conflict of interest, we're gonna talk about attending trustee, or, you know, communications with trustees, attending trustee meetings, that type of thing. So what I will, what I will start with, is that you are, you are subject to the Ohio Ethics Laws. From the, the broadest standpoint, it means that you should not be rendering decisions, engaging in conversations, hearing applications, that impact your own personal interests, your family member's interests, or your business partner's interests. And from, from a highest level is, if you get a notice of a zoning commission hearing, then you, it's probably a good idea you recuse yourself, you're probably within the, you know, the determination of, alright, this impacts me, this impacts my property. In terms of, of, you know, what is a true conflict of interest, because that could be a nebulous, it is generally, you are, you are prohibited from participating in things that can be a benefit or a detriment to yourself, again, your family members, your business, your business associates. The example I like to give, esp- again, because it could be a benefit or detriment, is if an application comes in, and it's, it's an unpopular application, and it's right next to your, your sister who you hate, and you're like, this is great, you know? It'll be a real detriment to, to that person, you know, that's a, a good example of, like, well, it, it doesn't have to be just, oh yeah, this'll be good for their property values, it's, you know, if that's something that could really negatively impact their property values, you, you need to, you should recuse yourself. Recusal does not just mean, I'm not gonna sit on the board. That means that, again, when Robin sends out the application, you know, you shouldn't participate in that, you guys can't go into private deliberation, so that's not part of the discussion, but you shouldn't talk to your fellow commission members about it, even if it's not a forum. Again, just taking yourself completely out, out of the loop. But I will say, there's caveat to that, if you recuse yourself from serving as a zoning commission member, that does not mean, you, you, so you take off your zoning commission member hat, that does not mean you take off your resident of Orange Township hat. And so if you recuse yourself from an application, you are able to come and, and participate in the audience, but when you get up and give your opinion, you should not say, I'm zoning commission member, Donnan, and da, 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 da. Again, you're there as resident, you are a resident, you are a neighbor, that type of thing, so.
So you don't even need to acknowledge that you sat on the board, I've recused myself or anything, you just do your part, speak, and move right there.
Correct, absolutely. There are, again, this is your community, these are your neighbors, and so it's, it's all interconnected, and sometimes there are applications that may come up, and you're like, ooh, what should I, you know? Well, it's not, it's not, I didn't get the notice, but it's around the corner, or I drive by it every day, or, you know, that type of thing. And if it, if it, a few things, one, if you really are concerned, you can obtain an advisory opinion from the Ohio Ethics Commission. They have kind of a few layers. You can call, they've got like a hotline, and I, we've got the phone number in here, you can call them, and say, look, this is my situation, they'll give you kind of a temperature check. But if it's something that's a little more specific, or a little more sticky, they may have you write to them, and they may give you a written opinion on whether or not there's truly a conflict. What, and, and that's basically your only get out of jail free card, if there's truly a situation of, of, I may have a conflict here. Again, on those more nebulous items, where it's, well, I drive past this a lot, or this person, this applicant lives next to my best friend, not a family member, not a business representative, but someone, you know, who I know quite well. What I would say is, the question you have to ask yourself, is, do you believe that you can make an impartial and fair decision, regardless of your own personal background? And if you believe the answer to that is yes, then, then again, that, that is, is your answer. But, but yes, so again, it's, it's, you can't use your position to secure a thing of, of value, which is a benefit or a detriment to those, those big groups of, of people. You also, no surprise, you can't solicit anything of value if it's substantial or improper. So, since, you know, can't get Buckeye tickets from, from an applicant, you know, again, coffee, or a donut, or donuts, probably not substantial, and, you know, probably not enough to provide improper influence, but just something to keep in mind. As zoning commission member, and again, this, this answer is different than BZA members. We get the question sometimes, can applicants meet with zoning commission members, you know, and that type of thing? And the answer is yes. From a legal perspective, you are able to do that. Again, they're, they're a lobbyist, and they're allowed to meet with you and provide information and answers. I don't know that, that anyone on this commission has that, that, has, has that practice or anything. What I will say, something to keep in mind, is, you know, the appearance, you know, optics are, are everything, what's the, what is that phrase, of perception is reality, perception is reality, and so if the audience members think like, oh-
I felt like I was on Jeopardy or something.
What was that? What was that?
I said I felt like I was on Jeopardy or something, and one day I was answering the thing.
Uh, what is, uh, but, again, you know, if the audience members see that the zoning commission, like, oh, they kinda seem familiar with each other, you know, is the fix in, that type of thing. And, and again, you're allowed to meet with them, what I would say is, if you do meet with them, remember that that conversation the public didn't get to have, you might have found out information that the public might not known, might not know. And so, if you meet with someone, ask the same questions, or, you know, ask, you know, fill it, fill the public in, again, it, it goes a long way, and it makes them-
Do you have to make a declaration of such, if, or?
No, you don't have to. But again, I've got, I've got some zoning commission members where, you know, like, out there's a particular applicant who's got the chair's cell phone number, and, you know, call, and meets with them, and there can be some benefit, especially when a big project is coming down the line, of, look, we're, that staff has been working with, you know, zoning commission members have been working with, just so it's not, again, but, but again, I do know plenty of zoning commission members who are just like, as a general proposition, no, I'm not meeting with you. Again, you, you are, you come in here and spend enough time in here, you're not gonna meet with an applicant in private.
Yeah, that's the other, do we have to disclose? I'm trying to figure out how to put it. I work in architecture and planning, so I know a lot of the applicants, the team. Usually there's only a couple civil engineers that do a lot of work, a couple of landscape architects that do work for my company, but would also work perhaps for the applicant as well. You know, we are in the same professional circles. Normally I don't bother acknowledging, yes, I know the landscape architect, they worked with me on these projects. I'm assuming I don't have to disclose that, or should I disclose that? I mean, I don't think it's gonna affect my perception of the project, because, you know, there's only a certain number of architects and engineers in the metro area, and if you're good, you're going to-
Get off the projects.
Exactly.
Right, right, exactly. Well, and, and just in terms of the commu-, you know, the communities are, you know, you, you come across the same paths, with, they're in the same industry. What I would say is, if your business has any direct contracts with those folks, then, and, and so, so then that, and I assume that was, was not the case, but then, if, if any of your firm's clients come, submit an application, that would be a situation where recusal would probably-
So yes, I have refused myself if the firm or the business I work for has business before the township.
Perfect, yep.
But if, you know, usually the engineers, or the landscape architects, or whatever, are on a project by project basis, that, yeah, I worked with them on a project two years ago, or, you know, they might be consulting on a project, but they're not, they're not employees.
Yeah.
They're consultants.
Yeah, no, that, that does not give me heart room.
Okay.
I think that a lot of times, the people who are coming with their concerns, they do observe us when we walk in, they watch us to see if we're gonna, you know, fret not talk to them, or whatever, and that is the perception that they have in their head after, when they come in here, it's already in there, it's carved in there, and I think a lot of times they watch also after the meeting is over.
I was gonna ask that question of that perception of reality thing. I mean, I think the idea that, you know, they can meet with, you know, anybody one-on-one and have that kind of lobbying thing, but it's the, the after effect, and these, my own pers- you know, I, applicant may come up and say, hey, why did you vote the way you voted? Or what about our project gave you concerns? And that sort of thing, and I presume it's appropriate to share that, I don't know if that is or is not.
So, it, it would depend. What I would say is-
But I didn't share anything that I didn't already say publicly.
Exactly, and, and I think that's, if, if you already said it in the meeting, I think repeating it is fine. I think there is, I, I think that at some point, there's also value in saying, like, listen, I think the hearing speaks, speaks for itself. And, and that's kind of where it is. But, but yeah, that's, I'm sure that that, I'm sure that that happens.
But what is, what is the appropriate and preferred thing? Should we?
I'm not allowed to speak.
Here's, here's what typically happens. I've been here long enough, I know lots of these developers, and people come in, 'cause this isn't the first time they've been here. And if we have preliminary meetings, I've already met them once. I can think of, never has there been any time at all that we've discussed something that wasn't discussed during the meeting. It's more a matter of, say, hi, you know, how you doing? Just one of those things, just, just running into somebody you know that you've, that you've seen over the years, but I can't think of any time, ever, 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 where something's come up, or something was discussed that was part of the project.
It is a matter of-
It was just, it was just, it was just-
Familiarity of, well, you know, you guys have a, some type of relationship that I'm not aware of, and I don't have that familiarity with you, so naturally, you're skewed one way or another.
Yeah. I just think it's the perception is my biggest challenge. I, I get it, I mean, Andy Harrell is good to see you.
Here's the other, here's the other thing, my perspective, is that, yes, I have a lot more information than these people sitting in the chairs have, I have a lot more. And my, and my role is, I don't view myself as a judge to decide what's going on, my role is to do the best thing for Orange Township. What is the best for our community? What is the best decision make that I can make as far as I can see, next 20 years, if I can see, 10 years? And, and so, yeah, we'll hear everything, but I've got more information than these people, and I'm supposed to have more information. Yeah, I said, yeah, I mean, if so, somebody took offense because I said hi to some people I knew, it's like, I don't, well-
Well, I don't know, I, I just, I try to hit the exit, say, buddy, y'all hit the exit. I just think it's the, as the, people are already angry, and even though I know Harrell and, and we've been road dogs for 20 years, I don't want the community to think, oh, he was in with Harrell anyhow, and he wasted my time, and blah, 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 blah. That's all I'm saying. I don't know how you appropriately make the hi Harrell, good to see you again, story, and then move on versus people. Now, if the place is empty, I don't care, you can trade, sit there and play checkers with Harrell if you want to, but it's just when people are here-
Yeah.
You know, because I've heard some of them say that on the way out.
Yeah.
You know, that, oh yeah, they, you look at them, blah, 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 did you see the way they were around the table, or that kind of stuff? And so I'm just trying to protect the perception, the integrity of the commission, and that sort of thing, so.
And it's, you know, obviously, if someone is in the audi-, you know, you, you can't, you can't change everyone's mind if they're in the audience. What I would say is, if, especially if something is said at the podium, that, that kind of insinuates that the fix is in, or that type of thing, I always think it's important to, to address of, you know, listen, folks, if some, if someone has put something on, that says something specifically on the record, but that does not address the situation of people just observing and making their own opinions, and, and deciding, you know, alright, well, I think you, you know, I think you guys are, you know, the fix is in.
Just like we've assessed what our qualifications are in the past. But, members of the public who-
Yeah.
Question our background and why we're here.
Right.
And whether or not we're just gonna- And whether or not we're just gonna rubber stamp development.
Right. Um, another question that came up in terms of, so we talked about, um, again, kind of the commission hat and the resident hat, but let's talk about kind of the tru-, the interaction with the trustees. So, um, again, and you guys are the first stop, um, so obviously there's an opportunity for, which, which doesn't, in my opinion, is not a good idea for trustees to show up at, at zoning commission hearings, um, because they should, in, in my opinion, they should wait until, you know, they'll have their day, and they will have your recommendation. You folks should have that ability to, um, hold your hearing, um, outside of the shadow of, of a trustee sitting here, um, and that type of thing. Again, what I can say, and I have, I have been in some, some zoning commission hearings where a trustee has shown up, they've recused themselves, um, from, because again, if you're gonna show up and you're gonna participate, you should not be participating as trustee, trustee Donan. Um, so that is something that, that could happen. But again, that, they, they have to deal with the potential for conflicts of interest as well. However, I think that the question was also, how do you deal with, um, trustee contact almost like outside of the hearing? And that is, that is difficult because at that point, again, the, the public and the applicant can lobby the trustees. Um, but zoning commission members, you know, again, it, it, in the default is the decision speaks for itself, you know, the, the recommendation of the zoning commission speaks for itself, and I am only one commission member. You know, I participated in the hearing, I may have had comments, feedbacks, that sort of thing in the hearing, but, um, you know, I, I, I don't think it is good practice for individual commission members to walk through reasoning with trustees, because again, it, it is, you know, your recommendation is, is a body of one. Um, it, and so something to, something to keep in mind. Um, you as zoning commission member should not be lobbying the trustees. Audience, applicants can, um, but, but that's something to keep in mind.
So, so if there's a, uh, particular thing we weighed in on, didn't go our way or my way in that kind of example, if it didn't go my way and now I wanna take off my zoning hat, commission hat, and I wanna go to the trustee mem-, uh, meeting and be a member of the community to tell them, because, you know, here I said no, and then I wanna go there and tell them, no, is that appropriate, or is that kind of like, really? You know, you weighed in on it, on the commission, now you are lobbying even as a member of the community now, to still get your point across about no?
I, I do think that is, is inappropriate.
Is inappropriate? Okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
So, um, because again, it, it, that you're serving in the role as commission member, the commission makes one decision, and at that point, it, it's, it's almost a matter of, um, like, well, I've, I've, I've stepped away from my ability to put on my resident hat.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, and obviously zoning commission members can go to the trustee meeting. Uh, what I would say is, um, especially since you guys have so many options to watch online and that sort of thing, because you're invested, you, you're like, all right, you wanna know how things end up. Um, but, so I, I would attend with extreme caution, and I would not, um, if you participated in the commission hearing, um, I would not provide.
So if there's a prospective application that you think prejudging to some degree, I probably don't wanna participate in that one, because I wanna have an opportunity to say what I wanna say, or even come here, then it's just you recu-, recused yourself and then you go, go through the process.
So what I would say to that is part of your, and, and I think what you're describing is almost gamesmanship of, I want to sit for certain applications, but if there's something I'm particularly passionate about, even though I might not have a legal conflict of interest, I want the ability to lobby. Um, what I would say is.
That might be a little rich, but I'll, I'll let you work with it.
Okay, okay.
From my fault, I wasn't, wasn't.
I'm speaking, I'm speaking in extremes.
Yeah, 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 gotcha.
Speaking in extremes, um, what, what I would say is that, you know, as commission members, um, you know, you've agreed to, to hear the applicant, you know, you've got a job and, and, you know, you've been appointed to fill that role, and obviously if there's a legal conflict of interest or something that you're, you really can't get past, then, um, you know, then recusal is appropriate. But sometimes there are, you know, part of, part of, you may have an application that you're like, I don't like this, um, but I don't have truly a conflict that I should recuse myself on, but, you know, that's, that's the tough work of setting aside your personal feelings um, to, to look at, you know, look at the zoning resolution, to look at all the, the external factors and setting aside your own personal feelings on something, so.
Gotcha. What great opportunity that I have to, than to come here and try to influence the rest of them.
That's exactly it. You, you lobby your fellow commission members.
Absolutely, I would be right here publicly lobbying.
Yeah, that's the, that's the strongest lobby of all. Um, you get to, you get to, again, try to influence all of them. Um, hitting on a few additional, um, just prohibitions. Um, so, and similarly with conflicts of interest, you are not allowed to have a, um, an interest in a township contract of some sort, so it makes sense. If you've got a landscaping business, um, the, the trustees can't hire your landscaping company to mow the lawn, that type of thing. And then similarly with, um, it's an issue, uh, trying to convince or garner favor for one of your family members or your um, business associates. Um, that is about, let me look through my notes. I think that those were most of my highlight, li-, level items. Again, I've been going for almost two hours. Remember when I said it would be one hour? You guys had so many questions, it was great.
One more thing though, can you pull a little more on that public convenience, I mean, making my decision though, based on public convenience, comfort, prosperity, general welfare? Uh, can that really just solely rest to, I mean, I think, uh, Mr. Monalte's gonna say it there about uh, what's in the general best interest of Orange Township? So even though the application may fit the script of check, 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 you know, yep, it's, meets all the zoning requirements, but if I don't think it fits the general welfare of the community, I certainly, I mean, I'm not challenged with saying no and have done so, but, uh, how, how do you reason that out, or how do you
Yes.
put the big umbrella out there to say, really, your vote is independent, you can make such a decision?
I think you have to weigh that against taking away the property right of the property owner as to their interest of doing that thing versus with their property versus your, uh, view of general welfare. So, you have to weigh those and balance that out. I think that is a, and you have to let your conscience speak for itself in that.
Absolutely.
And those, weigh those two things.
And that, I mean, that, I don't know that I could have said that any better. Of, I mean, those are the competing factors, and, um, you know, at the end of the day, it is, you know, and, and what I hate is when, um, it's sometimes, you know, commission members will say like, well, we just have to approve. We just have to approve.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and that is absolutely not the case. And at the end of the day, is make your, just, make your decision that you can live with, articulate the reasons why with those competing items and, and with the factors that we kind of walk through in terms of, well, what's the comp plan say? What is, what's regional planning said? What about the, the members of the audience talking about valid impacts? Um, and, you know, make your recommendation and, I mean, it's kind of easy to be like, well, you know, none of the trustees can say. Like, the heck with you guys, you know? Um, and, but that's again, at the end of the day, that's, that's why you've been appointed to this role is, you know, as, you know, your individual perspectives, um, you know, kind of working together, and, and that's why the board is relying on you, you know, what are your thoughts on this? Does this seem to make sense or not?
And we go back to those other things that schools, traffic, property values. So then how do you make a judgment to say, oh, this isn't valid when those things are off the table?
So it, it goes to, because again, we're thinking in the, the rezoning context of, all right, we've got an existing use, existing standards, and I want to change that. And so with that, and it, it's difficult to, it's difficult to kind of speak in complete generalities without like a specific example, but, um, you know, so, all right, somebody wants to change the, the district of their property, they wanna change the use. Um, does this use make sense? Um, obviously it will have some impact on traffic, it will have some impact on schools. Um, what about fire and safety services? Um, is this a, a use compatible with, um, you know, the, the surrounding area? Um, if this you, maybe if this, maybe this use makes sense across the street or down the street, but, you know, does it really make sense where it's currently located? And, um, and those are tough answers, or tou-, you know, tough questions to ask, and, and obviously it's very dependent on the specific application, but, um, you know, those are the.
Yeah, that's the door I wanna go there. You're able to walk through.
Here, here, we're also bumping into, and you have to take this in consideration, again, my opinion, but we're at the end of development of a lot of Orange Township. So a lot of these green space areas, which are now people are coming in to be developed, have been green space for the last twenty years. These people lived there and thought there was gonna be green space. No, they're properties for sale. So that's why we have rooms full of people, is because what they always thought was gonna be green space was always people, property, the people own the property, their property rights, and their ability to sell this property.
And do what they wanna do.
And, and, but now we have room full of people because they thought this was always gonna be trees and green space forever. Okay, it will be if you wanna buy the property.
Right, that's, that's.
If you wanna buy the property and own it and sit on it, then it can be green space.
Yeah.
But you have to own it.
I think it's appropriate, another one of those things, I think, is appropriate to say, if you want the property to be solely, nothing on it, buy it.
I, I tell, I say that line constantly to my, my boards, I say that line constantly in the trainings. I can't think of a single time where it'd be a good idea to say that.
I'm telling you, I'm telling you.
And, and it, I mean, it.
Me that shit, but it's just basic.
Yeah, and, and, but, but some folks don't, some folks don't think about it, or even with, especially places where it's farmland, and, you know, protecting the rural character and that sort of thing. Um, a, a recent perspective I, I had not thought about was besides the fact of like, you know, farmers wanting to, you know, just retire or the community's changing, um, for a lot of farmers, like, their, their land is their retirement fund. They don't have a 401K.
Right, right.
And so it's, it's, who are, who are you? You know, who are you? You know, I've worked my whole life and you've gotten to enjoy the beauty from afar of my land. I work like a dog. I wanna sell this, I wanna, you know, that's my retirement plan. And again, if, if you wanna buy that, and that feeds into the vein of, if you wanna buy it, then you can control it. Um, but it, but the, you know, then, you know, it's, it's the balance of the property rights, my ability to do what I want, and the, is there a reasonable articulable, um, something for not permitting you to get everything you want? Because just because you want to do something, you know, that's where the police powers come in. It has to be, it has to, you know.
So the question I sort of have that I've tried to bring up to the public, but I'm never quite sure, is they're like, well, yeah, I don't mind a business being there, I just don't want that business. I don't want another McDonald's, we already have one a block away, or a Wendy's, or, you know, I don't want a Starbucks, I want, and how to politely.
Then I'll take a Tim Hortons.
Yes, exactly. How do I politely explain that we can not regulate what business moves there if it's owned business?
Right, and that.
But through the idea of, is it, is it good for the community?
Well, that's my whole point, is if all of a sudden you're bringing, if it's in good for the community, yeah, I don't think a whole line of fast food joints might be good for the community. However, how can I say yes to McDonald's, no to Wendy's? How does somebody
Cause we got, we got enough hamburgers around here.
And, and the, I think on that end, is zoning doesn't regulate ownership, which again, you know, McDonald's, Wendy's, that type of thing, it regulates use. And so I, I understand why some folks may, you know, there are certain businesses that are more welcome in a, in a community than others in the same, you know, and fast food's a prime example of, of that. Um, but at the end of the day, it's, it's not ownership, it's, it's use. And frankly, um, I mean, another situation is, and I tell this to folks of like, look, it could be, property could be rezoned, and the next day they sell it to somebody else. And so that's why, like, at the end of the day, it's, is it, it's the global question of, does this make sense? Even though, again, people are like, well, there's a McDonald's coming in, or there's a, you know, whatever, I wish it was a Starbucks and, and not, you know, whatever. Um, also, be careful what you wish for.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, because there, there is a situation, it, it's been years, um, but there is a situation where a Target wanted to come in, and, um, and people didn't want it, and it got denied, whatever, and then a Walmart came in. And Walmart was approved. So, I mean, that's just an exam, and, and, you know, some people like Target more than Walmart, but.
Is, is never, is never gonna rain at their house, so to speak. You know, and the, the truth is, uh, the sun may be shining today, but the rain may come tomorrow to your own home. So I, I really wish folks took that more in consideration, but even just some of the comments.
Yeah, it's not gonna happen.
Comments.
That, that, but that's in human nature.
Yeah, I, yeah, you're right.
That is just, this is in human nature. That's why we're seeing rooms full of people, almost every zoning now, because these are places that were always green space, and these people thought, well, there's always gonna be green space. So we're always gonna, we're gonna see this from now on, and, and do they consider that? No. They don't, they don't have any idea what's going on. That's why they're here.
Here is a question I have, um, on, on the, on the process though. So, for example, if there is, if there was previously a business right at, right next to a betting, uh, a residential community, let's say, property, community, um, a bunch of communities, and then our comprehensive plan sets some standard, obviously we cannot uh, um, discontinue, uh, uh, the use, and we cannot force, enforce that. But let's say they come with a rezoning application for that property. Now, it has been there for ten years, a business case, a business use, but it, it comes to a rezoning application for some other use. Can we then say, no, you can only do either business or have a residential property? The, the same kind of business, not a residential property.
So it, it, you know, um, it depends on a few things. If it, again, Orange Township has, right now, you've got predominantly, um, planned districts, and so you have had some situations where I've got a planned district, it was used as a, a tire shop, and the, the development plan anticipated a tire shop or automotive shop, and these folks want to open a new business that doesn't meet the criteria of that development plan, but it's still a commercial operation of some sort. Um, and so that's a situation where they'd have to amend, amend their development plan. Um, and then you kind of have to run the analysis of, well, the new use that they want to do is that appropriate with, within the existing district, um, existing planned district, or if they want to rezone to a different district, does that district make sense, again, in terms of the, where everything else is?
I'm only thinking of the number of car washes we have.
I won't lie, I won't lie, today, I, uh, cause, you know, it's so nice out, and my car is just covered in salt, and, um, if, if I had, uh, if I'd been on my date, I was like, I was like, oh, you should have used one of those Orange Township car washes today. But another time, another time.
They're very close to properties.
Yeah. Julie, I wanna ask a question, recognizing that we've, uh, been at this for a while and do wanna wrap things up at some point, but, um, so one thing that, uh, you know, I feel like a lot of our discussion for criteria this evening has been based on uses, um, and I do wanna briefly touch on kind of development standards, uh, particularly since we're dealing with, uh, at least at this point, we're dealing with a lot of planned districts where we're talking about, you know, what kind of shrub should be here, and, and, you know, what, what should the building look like, and, and little details like that. How does the zoning commission weigh that criteria where, okay, we think, you know, we think the use might be appropriate for this site, but, um, you know, maybe the building height, um, is, is, you know, not what we wanna see, or maybe the setback is too close to another property. How would you recommend that the zoning commission kind of weigh those divergences? Uh, how would you recommend that the zoning commission kind of weigh those divergences uh, a- into the, the application as a whole?
Yeah, so, um, the first, uh, the first step would be, what does the specific district say in terms of approval standards? You gotta start, start at the, the fundamentals. Um, and then other than that, it, it's, um, and I hate to use the word reasonable, but, um, you know, i- if it's a divergence on those more area standards, um, what else is in the community? What else have you guys experienced? Um, that kind of goes back to, and, and, and that's where staff can really help you guys out, um, on other divergences that have been approved. Um, let me think, I was gonna say something. You mentioned landscaping and that sort of thing. So especially with planned developments, that's something to, to keep in mind, that you can ask for things. Um, so you can ask for landscape buffering, you can ask for mounding, um, again, rooted in a, in a reason, you know, rooted in, well, you know, there's a, a neighbor who's really close to the property, and so we don't want car lights going in their windows, so, yeah, let's get some mounding, let's get some, some trees, that sort of thing. Um, I know, um, I think you guys have, do you guys have a multi-purpose pathway? I know some communities are, are really into, you know, making sure that multi-purpose pathways go in, but I don't-
Only in our overlay district.
Okay, okay. But things like that, you know, asking for, asking for bike paths and interconnectivity in planned districts. Again, with, with planned districts, you have more flexibility, um, to ask for different things, to ask for divergences. In straight districts, which you're, you're going to see more of when the re- the rewrite is, is finalized, straight districts, it's, it's basically a thumbs up or thumbs down, and it's, it's, it's an approval, it's a denial. If they want a standard different than what's in that district, they're gonna have to go to the BZA for a variance. So, um, I think I kind of wandered around quite a bit. Do you think that I've answered your question?
Yeah, i- i- I mean, that, that helps me. Does, does the commission have any further questions or, or thoughts on that?
Do you have a thought, question?
I have a, I have a thought special question that's relevant to the, uh-
You can speak, speak up.
Hypothetical generalized situation, uh, let's say we've got a property, uh, the applicant wants to, uh, put something in there, uh, that requires several divergences. It's adjacent to residential properties. And one of the things that we don't really regulate is sound. We recognize light, we don't regulate sound. And if this business they wanna put in is gonna create a great deal of noise, how, how do we weigh the rights of the property owner, do what they want with the property, to the right of enjoyment of the adjacent residential property owners? Uh, which I think Mr. Pierce was alluding to earlier, um, there may be a reason we don't want that business there, even though the zoning would allow it, because of those extenuating factors. So how do we, how do we justify voting against something like that on the basis of impact on adjacent properties? Uh, in one of these, I'm thinking of, because they were requesting divergences, we could just say, no divergences, which may be impossible for the same business to- but if there are no divergences, and we still feel the same way, how do we, as members of the commission, say, you know, the law says you should be able to do this, but I'm voting no.
So, so noise is a, let me think of, let me think of, uh, I wanna make sure that I've got your questions kind of lined up. Um, so noise is kind of a nebulous factor for, when it comes to zoning. What I would say, I can't, off the top of my head, point you to any case law that says that it can't be considered as a factor. What I would say is, it shouldn't be considered as the only factor, and here is why. Um, townships have the ability to adopt a noise resolution, and so just how, you know, we talked about the engineer's office, you know, this is their purview, and, and, um, the commissioners, this is their purview. Noise is, and, and, I don't know if you guys have a-
We do have a noise resolution. It is, uh, a little dated. It references not playing, playing your phonograph too loud. I am not joking.
Oh my gosh!
But yes, it does exist.
It does, it does exist.
Wow!
Gosh, the phonograph, that is really good. So, so, um, uh, out, you know, applicability aside, um, so, so from, again, from just a legal perspective, um, because the, or higher revised code gives townships the mechanism in this noise resolution to control loud noises or disruptive noises, that type of thing. The fact that a use may create some noise, or even just an annoying amount, um, on its own, um, probably isn't good enough, but, um, and, as you said, you know, there could be situations where, well, it's going to be really loud, they're asking for a variety of divergences, we're not gonna grant those divergences. So, um, you know, again, that's, I'm sure that's happened, that's happened before. Um, but the, the, the other scenario that you identified of, well, if there's no divergences, or if there are no divergences, and it, we think it meets the criteria, and we recognize that it may be loud, um, you know, the, the risk is, it's not a, is, is the decision based on legitimate factors, and that's, that's the risk. Um, you know, that's the risk. And what I would say with, with noise and that type of thing, it's also very difficult to, I mean, it's difficult to enforce, enforce noise resolutions. You gotta get the sheriff's office involved, um, a- and, and that's, and that's really tough. Um, but also, a, um, well-crafted zoning resolution, part of identifying appropriate uses, appropriate districts, um, will hopefully like cut off a lot of that issue, because again, if there's a situation of heavy industrial manufacturing, which can make a lot of noise, um, we wanna think that that district may not be identified as being appropriate near a, you know, a single-family subdivision, that type of thing, so, um, but no- noise, that's a, that's a, um-
Are there any, are there any noise codes written for the, for the state or other townships?
So, so the, so in the revised code, there's a section that says that townships can adopt a noise resolution.
Okay.
And basically, excuse me, it's in particular with, with properties adjacent to residential property, because again, it's, if your business is next to a lot of business, nobody's trying to sleep there, you know, that type of thing. Um, so, so there is a section, um, and, and so townships can adopt cer- certain restrictions dealing with noise. Um, but a difficult part of that is, okay, if there's a, something that's operating in violation of that noise resolution, how do you enforce it? Has to be your law enforcement, which is the sheriff's office, um, which, you know, sheriff's office rolling up and saying, look, you guys are being loud. It, it, it can be difficult, it can be difficult for them to write a ticket and that sort of thing.
Yeah, enforceable.
So, but again, I think, I, I think that noise can be regulated in unintended ways, and kind of, you know, again, heavy industrial shouldn't be near single-family subdivisions and that sort of thing.
I think about the loudest business probably is a car wash. I'm, I'm, you know, I mean, as far as things we see all the time, I mean, I'm sure there's probably others, but I have no idea, I'm guessing.
And, and noise in general, um, from a legal perspective, noise is also considered very subjective of, you know, it, it, some people are, are just much more sensitive, some people aren't, um, and so it's some, an ordinary course of business, like, not saying that a car wash is, is quiet by any means, but in terms of, um, an unreasonable noise emanating from the property, that's just, it's just generally a subjective type of thing, so.
All right, do we have any final questions for Julie?
Sounds like that's a wrap-up.
Yeah.
Thank you, Julie.
I did say, I was like, no, or?
Thank you very much for all that.
Very good, very good.
Thank you so much.
Education and insight.
So, Robin, do we have any more business before the commission?
Well, so we did, uh, we did talk about, um, trying to tackle our zoning code rewrite this evening. I think we are probably past the point of no return on that one. However, um, we would like to, uh, schedule a meeting for that in February, and I would like, uh, learning what we have, or using what we have learned tonight, I would like to continue that hearing to a time date placed certain, um, at some juncture in February. Uh, so at this point, I believe, uh, we have, uh, the submission deadlines for zoning commission meetings in February has come and gone, we have not received any applications. Um, so February is, uh, basically clear, so we could, uh, we could do, we could do the fourth, the eleventh, the eighteenth, or the twenty-fifth. Those are all Tuesday evenings that the commission normally could meet on, so, uh, please take a look at your calendars if you're able, and, uh, let me know if any of those dates are particularly good or particularly bad.
I don't know why I had the eleventh and twenty-fifth already marked.
So that's, I believe, so the regular meetings are the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month, so we kind of have a hold on those, but we, we don't schedule those unless we have applications.
That would work for me, the eleventh or the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth does not work for me.
Okay, does the eleventh work?
Fourth and eleventh.
Yeah, I would say the fourth or the eleventh, yeah.
Stephen Dennis?
Um, the twenty, week of the twenty-fifth does not work for me.
Yeah.
Okay, do we, do we-
I'll try my best at twenty-eight.
So do we have a preference between the fourth or the eleventh?
I would do the eleventh, if that works for everybody.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so at that point, I will, I will look for a motion to continue the hearing on the, uh, on ZON dash twenty-four dash zero-five zoning code rewrite to February eleventh at six thirty P.M.
Second.
Can I have a vote?
Mr. McNulty?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Bellis?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenula?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
And yes, I, I will, I will send down the calendar.
I should've given my reasoning for voting yet. Adjourned?
Yes, can we adjourn the meeting?
Julie, do we need a motion to adjourn?
You don't, but I think your practice is to, do you guys usually adjourn?
Uh, trustees do. A zoning commission is-
Oh, you usually do.
I usually just say, meeting adjourned.
Yeah.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.